Have your attention please.
It's your first meeting again.
Words.
My moves, I'm sorry. No, it probably doesn't work super good. We'll try. I'd like to call the regular Wilmington City Council meeting, March 2nd meeting, 3:00 PM to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Dermond.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nick Eadweard.
Here.
And Matt Kurt.
Here.
Seeing everyone present, would you stand to join me in pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a brief moment. Thank you. Pleasure to see everybody here tonight. Under my portion, we have the approval of the agenda. Any motion to approve is presented.
Actually, can I stop that for a second?
Yes, sir.
Move to strike the executive session items 16, both A and B.
May we have a new motion?
I'm going to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion second to approve the agenda as amended, all in favor of the Senate. Aye, aye. The agenda is approved as amended. You also have before you the minutes of the February 16th, 2023 meeting. Want your pleasure?
Move to be accepted for then?
Second.
Motion second, impossible. That the meeting minutes be accepted is presented, all in favor of the Senate. Aye. The meeting minutes are accepted. I want to recognize Beth Huber is in our audience, as she often is, from the Board Authority, and she wishes to make an introduction tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Beth Huber with the Clinton County Board Authority, and with me this evening is Alex Barris. He is the new Executive Director for the Board Authority, joined the team of the month, and very excited, trying to give him all of his speed and getting around to meet everybody. So pleased that we haven't been out to meet everybody, we will, but very glad to have him here tonight. Wanted to get him introduced to you guys.
Yeah, not a big speech time, but really, this is officially my tenth day standing in Wilmington. So really looking forward to working with all of you, mayor, standing for the council members. And I'm here to, I'm here if there's any calls or questions, but hope to be working with all of you quickly and soon, and really looking forward to it, just wanted to say that, thank you.
Glad to have you with us, Alex. I was in a meeting with him yesterday, and I appreciate your just candor and knowledge of the community, so I think we're gonna have a good time. That's all I have. Just, yes, I have something else. I'm on public hearing. I was, I was just joking.
You were messing with me a little bit.
That's why we have back end people. All right. We are going to open a public hearing on petition for planning unit development, PUD, of 28.6 acres more or less, more commonly known as 105.7 North Lake District. The public hearing is open. I believe Mr. Perky is going to go over seeing.
I'll, yeah, I'll do my best with it. I know Mr. Scheiger meant to be here tonight to kind of see this structure, this bit of the public hearing through. He's not able to be here because of a conflict on his schedule, so I think at this point, Andrea, I'll have to lean on you a little bit to help guide through. I know that the latest change to the map in front of us is adding a change in water flow, the secondary catch base, the south catch base meeting.
So, well, it's probably easiest to have.
Our expert here.
They can best explain the development, and we've been in conversations with DDC for about a year or so, or more, going through different ways that this might work to develop subdivision where the drive-in theater was, and I'm going to let him just explain it, and you tell me where you want to go with this.
Maybe I might be able to hold back a little and just kind of explain, here we are, and we presented the first of the council, yet just planning commission. So I'm here on behalf of, I'm his perpetrator, here on behalf of DDC management, and we have John Bill as the president of management as well here. We're a land development company in Miami's fertile, south Dayton, develop subdivisions in the Dayton area, Cincinnati, Columbus as well, and we also have some projects in Charlotte, North Carolina, and in the Orlando, Florida area. So we have, that's a little bit of background on us, and we've been through planning commission a couple times, a little bit of history on the project, is that we were originally going through re-straight zoning of the property and had 50-foot lots. After, you know, having conversations with some of the builders that we've been working with in the markets, they wanted a product that could fit on 40-foot lots, and so that is why we've gone the PUD route, in order to get 41-foot lots is what we're proposing versus 45, which the underlying zoning law allows. So we've been working with staff, we're very excited about this project. We've been working with them, there's been multiple iterations of the project, and the latest one comes with, there was concerns about drainage in the southwest corner, and just next to the adjacent property. So we've been working with our engineer, which is a CESO, and we've come up, I think, with a very good solution, working with the city's engineering consultant, to propose a drainage swale that's allowed to be. So the big concern was just off-site drainage. So the big concern was just off-site drainage. And so some of the latest updates that we've made are incorporating the drainage swale just south of Lot 92, that will then traverse west and then into the catch base that we're proposing. So these were just some of the latest drainage issues, or concerns that existing resident, existing resident had. And so some of the latest updates that we've made are incorporating the drainage swale just south of Lot 92, that will then traverse west and then into the catch base that we're proposing. So these were just some of the latest drainage issues, or concerns that existing resident, existing resident had.
So you're not putting an additional drainage in the corner?
No, that's, that would be a swale, and that would just naturally flow into that catch basin there once it's created.
So it wouldn't take any water from the property in behind it either?
It would catch that as well, and then flow into the catch basin.
Yeah, sorry, problems on that end of town. Huge problems. Drive down Brook Boulevard after this happens.
Which is right on.
When you wish to speak, ready?
I'll wait, I'll wait.
So those are kind of the latest concerns that we've been working with the city staff and the engineer on to try to be a neighbor and, you know, get ahead of this before we actually go into final review of the construction drawings. So because we have been working on this project for so long, we are pretty far in the engineering, which has helped us be able to get in front of these issues before the rezoning is final. So we're here really to, you know, also listen to any concerns, questions that council has, the residents have. There were a few things brought up at the planning commission meeting regarding sidewalks, and having a pedestrian sidewalk connected to Kentucky Avenue, actually, versus having a road connect. So previously, Kentucky Avenue was, the new portion of Kentucky Avenue that we're proposing was tying into the existing. There was concerns about the existing conditions of that road, and also improvements that are along, other on the west side. So in talking with planning commission, we came to an agreement that we would, you know, not make that connection, but for the time being showing pedestrian to sidewalk connection. And then there were sidewalks that were requested out on Lincoln Avenue, and we've made those changes as well. Just a little bit of coverage.
They may not be on here, and this is just. But sidewalks.
What? Yes, ma'am.
But sidewalks on Lincoln Street going all the way to your stuff like that, don't you talk about?
Correct, so on the bottom there, top of the bottom right.
Making the connection all the way in between the two, so that they can walk between them, so it's this.
Okay, so I'm seeing Kentucky Avenue, it tends to, you know, cross that, right?
Which is.
Correct.
All right, I see that.
It doesn't connect what, I'm sorry, it doesn't make the final little bit of connection here because of concerns with the traffic this way, and not want to cut through on the city's request.
But it's adding an access and equal to this.
For this development. We're dedicating the right of way, so if the ever gets improved to the west, the city can make that last little connection.
Yes, sir, sorry.
Mr. Rack on the drainage swale. Rick and some of the city people were getting up to meet with me out there on site last week, and we left at that, we were told at the time there was going to be a catch basin to put in the corner there. Why did you not do that? Why is it just coming up tonight? That you're gonna swale it instead of the catch basin?
I believe the last conversations that we had with Paul was that it would just be a swale, but I mean, if we have to wear the catch basin, we're willing to do that. It's just an additional structure.
Yeah, Paul, um, suggested the catch basin, they did prepare us in the original, and determined that the swale would take all the water, that you wouldn't need the extra catch basin. I mean, Paul, Mr. Perky, took care of this in there.
And if I can add to that, so Paul's email today about this said that the revision addresses the intent of what city council and the developments, neighbors have asked for. He's advising the city council and the administration that he is satisfied with this approach, and that you should be advised, however, that the city will examine and review the details that you still, when you make the final plan, submit all to make sure that the stormwater calculations bear out what we think is going to happen here by reducing the water on your property and the things that drain into your property, that it will take care of an existing problem that you have. That's, that's the goal.
Yeah, and I could just expand on that. This isn't the final review of that, we still have to submit the drawings, which will be the city's part of the final.
I understand, however, this council only has one bite of the apple, I want to just do something. And I want to see what those calculations are, I want to see what the slope is on that swale, and I want to see those calculations before I can.
I think that's something that we can definitely come up with, I think, yes.
Other council members have questions? If not, we can open it to the public.
Can we do it?
In a proper order.
Amy Johnson, could you come forward? I'll put your name on, I will put your name, yes, I'll make you.
Can we shrink that down just for a second, so we can get a better view?
Absolutely. I'm happy to, well, maybe.
I'd like to get the.
You know, with, ah! Yeah, Hannah's having trouble today. Oh, nice. Is that look nice? Okay.
So we'll do the three-minute rule on this.
Oh, we do a three-minute thing here, so yes. Are you ready to begin?
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, so I'm a property owner that has property immediately adjacent to the PUD. Down there, not where the drainage issue was, but across the street, at 964 North South Street. In reviewing the proposal, I also pulled the building and zoning code, section 1157.06, which talks about the traditional neighborhood district rules. On page two of the proposal for the PUD, it shows a typical lot data. It looked like the setbacks were all comparable in the PUD to what the traditional neighborhood district was, but I didn't really see information about what the lot square minimum is. In a, in a traditional network, or neighborhood district, that is supposed to be 5,000 square feet minimum, and that we cannot have more than 60% of the lot covered by buildings. And I would like to find out, if the question can be answered tonight or at a future hearing, what that percentage of maximum combined footprint for all the structures on these proposed lots are, and what the average lot area for each lot would be. Also, I didn't see any notation as to if there would be street parking allowed on one or both sides of the street in the PUD. And also, and I was curious if a traffic impact study has been done for it, and have those results been published or made public?
They have been discussed in detail in a public meeting at planning commission, yes.
Okay. If, could we possibly note the date when it was discussed?
Absolutely, and I can, I can also offer you a copy of the summary.
Okay. All right. I believe that's all the questions I have. Like I said, I'm not sure that they can be answered tonight, but if they could be noted to be answered at a future meeting.
Paige, do you want to answer the lot coverage? I mean, I can do it. It's 41, it's 41 feet lot width, and they list 4,000 square foot minimum lot area. And I'm assuming that you're staying with the 60% lot coverage, or are you, does the PUD, I wasn't sure about that.
It doesn't.
I didn't see it in the PUD.
I didn't.
It doesn't speak to, we weren't clarifying the lot coverage.
So if it's, sorry. If it's not clarified as an exception to the underlying zone, then my understanding is the base zoning rules apply.
So it'd be 60% of a 4,000 square foot lot?
Look to zoning, so it's verified that that would be.
And if you're, if you're planning on doing anything else, then it needs to be spelled out in the PUD, so, and that would.
And it would be of the actual lot, though, because most of them are more, 4,000's the minimum, but.
Correct. Please.
I think most of them are over 5,000. If I can.
Your papers. It's your paper.
Maybe somebody knows where to begin?
Well, it's being, it's being cringy, I don't know.
All of these, like 33, there we go, not with the, like 53, 52, 5, 5, most of them are over the 5,000. It does allow for four. I'm not even sure if we have anything that is at the four, so it would be 60% of the actual lot size.
It was the left-hand side of my property at the 4,000.
There's 49.
48, there's a seven, a six.
Go on over.
We're going, we're going. 81, and then they have two 40.
And I'm, I'm adjacent to lot, the proposed lot 93, and I'm not sure that that would be 5,000.
That's 6,000.
6,000, okay, I see them. And the only other thing, and I know I'm past my agreement, there's also a structure height of 35 feet maximum, is that going to be maintained?
That's all the questions, okay.
I mean, the design of the plant uses to overlay tradition, it sits on top of the existing zoning, so if it's not spelled out in there, it stays at the level of the zoning that's right there. So if that's the, the way it works, it has to be listed.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Just making a note. Well, the next one's Kirk, but you've already spoken. David Rupp.
Let me know when you're ready.
Paper. Okay, I'm ready. I'd like to knight the city for at least coming and looking at the water issue, even though I thought we were discussing a drainage in the corner.
Can we have a, just name and address?
David Rupp, 963 North South Street. You know, I've been a builder all my life, and I've always tried to look logically, logistically, and all this stuff, and, you know, I believe that the city has already accommodated the developer greatly, are rezoning it to smaller lots. Now they want to go from 45 feet water, even less. Seems like they're trying to shoot over more houses into the small areas. It's already dense population. So I was told at a planning meeting that people want smaller yards. I spent over half a day trying to find a report that said that, couldn't find it. Although I did find lot, average lot sizes. The smallest cities, or states that had small lot sizes was like Maryland, California, Hawaii, and the smallest one was like 7,599. Small, or the average size of Ohio lots are 15,558. So they want to blow past this and go to 41 feet in the drainage lot, which is going to affect parking if they allow parking on the street. If people are visiting houses, Thanksgiving, and stuff like that, where are they going to park? Even by this smaller drainage, it's going to be parked in front of somebody else's car. So that doesn't make sense. It's already a dense project. The houses are 10 feet apart. That's, you can't even get a pre-built shed in behind, in between the houses area. You know, I went over to the subdivision that got built off of Nelson. Those houses are close, but the way they're built, 65 feet wide lot, wide lots, and the different style of housing, looks like people wouldn't want to stay there. So this one, they're going to be all on the road, all summer houses, all, you know, I don't know that people would want to stay there long-term. You know, I thought it was the zoning that was to protect the community, and also to preserve the character of the neighborhood. So they wanted to even make that smaller. And let alone the sound coming from one house to another. A friend of mine lives 22 feet from a house, from here. That's it? That's all the time I get?
Three minutes.
Huh?
You can finish your, your phone.
Well, it goes into traffic and, and all this, you know, they, and the tractor crew reported, talked about needing turning lanes, and when it was coming up to Kentucky, well, that got canceled, but even they wanted that exit from the one going out to Lincoln Street, move north, so there'd be a turning lane later on for Florence in that property at the city's expense. And they don't even want to put the bridge over the creek to tie the two, the bit, or the buildings together because of expense. You know, a lot of 40, if you say, you know, this is part of the project. You know, they started off with 92 lots, that's pretty dense. You know, I'll sum it up to say, my little career has been jobs worth doing, worth doing right, and it doesn't cost that much more to do it right, or that much more time.
Thank you. Thank you for that, sir.
Next is Jamie Knowles.
Yeah, this is a long time. Jamie Knowles, 550 Brook Boulevard, moved in Ohio. Come things, you know, I know I'm coming to, coming this late, didn't even realize it was this far along. You got one of the nicest subdivisions in Wilmington. And you guys are really going to put something like that, this there? My question for you two, where do you live? I guarantee you, there's nothing this small next to you. How would you like your property value to be dropped because of a very small lot subdivision that's right next to your larger home? Has the, has the city done any study on what this is going to do to property value? What's the average price of these homes that we're talking about here? Who's, who's going to pay the difference in these properties that hit the wall? Because we have basically a tiny home subdivision, right next to, laugh all you want. Those are tiny homes. Those are tiny homes. My house on Richardson Place, I consider it a tiny home. Those lots are a lot bigger, my lot on Richardson was bigger than these, right over by the high school. We're talking about drainage, drive down Brook Boulevard. Now I know why everybody was over there working last week, too, we can tell. It's still not right, there's still standing water down there, at Williams and Brook Boulevard. I assume that they were coming back. All the work that has been done on Brook to try to drain that water from where homes were built basically in a watershed, it raised up off the road, there's a waterway down the center of the street. The water does not drain there. It does not drain back on Florence. We've got a waterway back there that is out every spring. Jonathan was back there with me last spring. We still haven't seen any work on it. My suggestion was let's fix everything around it, and then get this fixed. If they want to do this, why not have them? This is a perfect opportunity to have some money, get back into the city. Why not have them fix our problem back on that end of town? If we're going to put more people in, we're going to have more problem with, with drainage, not with everybody else on a lot of this. I also heard a comment that we didn't want to extend Kentucky Avenue, not sure exactly why, and that's neither here nor there now. The one comment I didn't like was, well, the city can do that when it's on. How much, how much are the developers doing of this? How much of this project is coming out of city funds? I mean, I, I really think that, and maybe this has all been addressed, and I'm just missing it, and I apologize if, because I can come into the game late, and I know that. But. But long story, I just think we need to do a lot more studying on what's going on right here because you're talking Denver issue. This wouldn't happen if it was Richardson Place, I guarantee that.
Jason Stoops.
Jason Stoops, one-one-eight, South Marbury. Two questions on this, on the zoning variance for small lots. Is that for the depth of the city or the depth of the developer's profit margin? And with the additional housing coming into that strip of area, is it going to be a sewer upgrade to handle the extra sewage? And so is that going to be going us, or are they going to handle the upgrade too quickly?
So they're putting in a lift station to send all the sewage down Kentucky over to the plant. So pavement will go down, like, and pavement will go down south to the road or at capacity. But we do have some capacity going down Kentucky and going, and then going by the school on and over towards Nelson.
Is it a temporary problem until the new lift station comes online? Would that help with the situation?
It'll help some, but it's more about the size of the lines and the size of the plant. So.
That's the end of the, they've summed up.
Any other comments from council, or is there anyone that wishes to state that didn't sign up? You, you'll need to come forward.
Jamie Knowles, thirty-five, thirty-seven, southeast strip路. Just, I haven't been on top of this, but ten feet apart, I understand that is the minimum for fire code, is that correct? Does anyone know the answer to that between housing?
I don't know that the fire code's been addressed regarding the, the nine-odd separation is only regarding something.
Right, and it's, it's, I believe, minimum five with a combined fifteen, is that, or is it combined ten?
I think it's combined ten. It's the traditional.
Traditionally, you did not change that. So in, like, other districts, the minimum side yard setback is five feet and combined either ten or fifteen. So you can have, in most residential zones, one that's five foot off of the property line here and one that is five foot off the property line here, that would be ten feet apart. That's in the zoning code and, and ten feet, I think, is actually fire code when you're building a shed or something next to your house. You have to have from fire code a minimum of ten feet from one structure to another. So.
It's almost, would you allow a shed to get through the onlookers?
Well, you would not be allowed to put a shed on the side of that house anyway, as you can in many places.
What I'm just saying, it's so tight that I just worry that we'd have a domino effect if we would ever have a major fire.
And sheds have to be twenty feet off the back, and they also have to have the accessory structures setback, so five means fifteen. So, and then ten feet away from the back of the house, so all sheds would have to be in the back of the house within those parameters. I'm learning how, I'm so sorry.
Glad you're here.
Yeah. Just, just a quick question, if I may. I guess I'm kind of confused because I was always told that you couldn't put a fence ten feet off your, closer than ten feet off of the property line because of fire codes. It takes a minimum of ten feet to get a fire truck in. Well, if the houses, if you only have five feet, how does the fire truck get behind the house? And how do we not have other houses catch on fire? I mean, five feet apart is pretty dang on close for a fire.
In terms of the rules for fences, fences can be anywhere on your property, on your property line, not in front of the house. So you can put fences on property lines as long as they are not the retailers.
No. I've never had anybody ask for a fire, I mean, and all the times we've discussed zoning, the fire setbacks, I've never even pondered that. I could find an answer, I think, but if, perhaps that's inclusive of zoning to, I mean, zoning, zoning goes for everything from, you know, aesthetic value of the neighborhood to safety and structure. So, I mean, I would assume that's ruled in there, but I can't tell you that a hundred percent. I don't know.
I just got one quick comment. It's interesting that they want a twenty, the city wants a twenty-foot easement to work on their storm pipe coming in between the houses, but yet the houses are allowed to be five foot, or ten feet apart. So I just find that kind of interesting.
A lot of good comments. Anything else from the council?
Mr. President, I did a number of comments, and I wanted to delay this too much. And I hope people won't read anything into what I'm about to say because I haven't had my phone on the shelf. I do, however, have a number of questions that I think are serious concern. It was brought up about the lift station. If I look at these plans correctly, and Ricky can help me out here. That lift station is going to flow into the manhole on, via four-inch force paint into the manhole on Kentucky Avenue. Manhole on Kentucky Avenue currently has, as I see the drawing, two eight-inch pipe. I assume one's an inlet, one's an outlet. If you, if it's sized for the eight-inch inlet and you put four inches of force paint into it, is that not going to charge that pipe?
That, um, manhole, oh, it should be like that, no, now that you say that.
Okay, can you give me an answer on that?
Oh, you will, yeah.
And that's, that lift station will be fourteen feet in the ground. By the way, a couple, a couple of other things on the lift station itself. All of our, the lift stations in town have some really sophisticated telemetry that tells us when the pumps go down and alerts the plant via radio so that the sewer lines don't back up in the area before we get a chance to get out and fix it. I see no telemetry on this, on the details for this lift station. Is that going to put, be put in, at the cost of the developer? Do we see that on the drawings, do we stipulate that on the drawings? Fourteen feet deep, and that's what that well will be for the lift station.
Right.
Is it the intention of the developer to dedicate all these utilities to the city population project?
Yes, per city requirements, yeah.
So the city will review all of these because if we're going to inherit it?
Right, and it'll be told about those things.
What about the story, restrictions? What about the, what about the detention points? Who maintains those?
HOA, yeah.
You will have an HOA for the project?
Yes.
Is that stipulated in the drawings they put?
Uh, we don't usually stipulate HOAs on the drawing, but I think it's in the, probably not.
I'm not, I'm not asking for the details of the HOA, I'm just, if it's going to go on the zoning, it'd be nice if somebody could just put a note on there saying that if you buy a lot here, you're going to be a member of the HOA.
We'll have it recorded, the documents ahead of any lot sale so that they all know, so they'll get a copy of them.
As I say, this is our one shot at the, what I'm trying to do is protect our system. But, you know, hopefully you guys sell out in two years' time and you're going, we live with it for the next couple of years. I guess the biggest concern I have is really from a safety issue because I understand now we're not going to put, you're going to phase this, and you're not going to put the bridge in?
You want me to come up? All right. John Bill, D E C Management. That is correct. We're dedicating the right-of-way there for it. Since early on in the project, a couple iterations ago, we weren't making the connection there between them, but we were dedicating the right-of-way for it. That is correct.
Well, I, I'm young. I have a real serious concern about approving the entire plant without the bridge going in as a stipulation that any lots developed in the north. You've got sixty-three lots on that north section. If there's a fire at the intersection of that north street coming out to Lincoln, and a guy, you know, went a quarter mile back on that street, has a heart attack, how are you going to get a lifeblood to it? This is the, I wonder if, I wish Brian was here, I'd like to ask him if the fire department has reviewed this, signed off on it?
Andrew can answer that, but I believe it's been reviewed by fire and police. It meets the minimum on, if it was coming through for its own subdivision on the north side, it meets all the minimums for that required by the city.
We have had Chief Mason review this, and in fact, one of the things that we had, one of the iterations was to cul-de-sac that end of Kentucky. And because from a traffic standpoint, perhaps they didn't want two outlets onto Lincoln. So that was part of the discussion. And under the advisement of Chief Mason, that just isn't good practice for the fire trucks. So we have had discussions about safety vehicles and how they will perform in. And can you remind me, we were talking about, is this, this is our typical residential section, is how you're building the street?
For the street widths and all that, it needs the typical.
So that's parking on both sides.
And we lean back to the city, but it's the typical street section for the city. If you wanted to limit it to one side, that's your, your ability within code. But it does need the width of a typical street section for working.
Slightly tight to make it uncomfortable, like we're doing in Timberland. So it doesn't become a speedway in any way.
Something I want to ask before we get off the bridge, so to speak. We discussed traffic study on the, on the, at the beginning, at the outset. But if there were a bridge there, does that change our traffic engineering expectations? I suspect it would drastically.
I would have to lean on Paul, if you work closely with ours. And we looked at multiple iterations with the connection, with the connection to Kentucky. They went through a lot of different iterations, I know, back and forth on what would be required.
And I know the traffic study was more extensive than what we asked for.
But that's a dynamic difference. I mean, the bulk of those houses are on the north side of that, that, where the bridge would be the connector. And it would, it would have definite impact on the existing houses on north-south in Kentucky, for sure. So, you know, as we move forward, I was kind of asking where, is the plan, is the traffic engineer engineered for there being connector? Or is that the, the set of rules we're operating on?
Andrew can speak to it better than, I don't think it was decided whether or not it would be connected in the future, but they wanted to reserve, or preserve the ability to connect in the future, which is why we did the dedication of the road.
When planning commission looked at this, what they felt like these were two sort of standalone subdivisions, right? But in the future, if there is development north of town and we want to continue this connectivity up into northern development, then, and that's ten, twenty years in the future, it's so far in the future that we wanted to retain this area as right-of-way so we wouldn't have to ask for that if that connectivity would want to be made. So that's why there's no bridge.
When I heard right-of-way, I didn't know if that was an intentional, if that's a soon project or in case we wanted to.
It is just Taylor's recommendation for future planning, but it's so far in the future that it doesn't quite make sense, and it's not needed. The planning commission, I'm speaking totally, not my opinion, okay. And the planning commission said that they didn't think the bridge at this point was necessary to make the two functional separate subdivisions, if, I'm explaining that like you were.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to go back to the safety issue, and I know you probably discussed it at the planning commission, and I understand that. But I personally would like to hear from Chief Mason or somebody from the safety department. I'm sure I guess that if you put sixty-three families back there with one piece of insurance, that it's not a safety issue.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the parking issue on the streets, we've only got two, under forty-one foot width, back-to-back, and the rest of thirty-one. Which means you're probably not going, you almost kind of have to limit that parking to one side over. Or if a lot's being parked down the street, in order to get two cars to pass. We have this, this situation in town right now, we're fairly down with Florence Avenue.
Just so I can clarify the question, or or the comment. What does the width of the lot have to do with the width of the street and car being able to pass in the street? The, the width of the road is, I don't, I, I know, I can't speak to Wilmington's code. I don't know if you allow parking on both sides with your standard street section or not. But the width of the lot shouldn't impact the ability to pass with the width of the road, I don't think.
Well, yeah, it is, it is two different things, I can answer that, and I'll talk about the width of the lots in a second. The width of the street, thirty-one feet, take off four feet for, that's back-to-back curve. Take off four feet, that leaves twenty-seven feet. Then you put, and one nine-foot parking place there, you've got eighteen feet for across the pass. Two parking places in there, eighteen off of twenty-seven, then one nine-feet, I'm trying to get there. So having said that, what does parking on the street have to do with a lot width? If you have a forty-one-foot lot, and you've got two ten-foot side lots, that leaves you thirty-one feet billable, correct? Of that thirty-one feet, if God wants to put in a driveway, if you've got parking on one side, and the other side's going to have driveway, park off-street, so that takes another nine feet off of his build-up a lot. Now he's got twenty-two feet to build on. And assuming that you could, you could put a driveway within the setback, not a cardboard, but a driveway. I think you can do that, correct? Still maintain your ten-foot separation between the two.
Yes, and driveways need to be three foot off the property lines. And so.
I believe there will be, in this, with forty-one feet, if we put a sixteen-foot driveway in, you know, a two-car garage with a sixteen-foot driveway, so that's the widest that would go in here, it would leave twenty-five feet of parking in front of each home. We will also require with the setbacks that allows for four parkings in that scenario, four parking spots within the lot itself, two in the garage, two in the driveway. And then it allowed, it would be thirty, whatever, it's a twenty-five feet in front of the home for parking as well. In front of each home, parking. Is he going to take away fire hydrants and things like that that are normal?
So if we're looking at the forty-one-foot lot, we go sixteen-foot driveway for a car?
Yeah, I was given the worst-case scenario, the minimum of forty-one feet in the largest driveway that would likely be there. So like worst-case scenario.
The guy that buys the forty-one-foot lots is going to have approximately twenty-three feet to build his house. Now, to kind of put that in perspective.
He should have thirty-one feet to build, thirty-one foot width by, by what I get, the front rear setbacks building pad. It's a thirty-one-foot wide building pad that he should have.
That's correct. On that building pad, you've still got to take off driveway.
It, what, the front of the house?
And what you're winding up with is about twenty-four feet of, of living space. And a house that's going to be long and narrow, and that's maybe what you're planning. Have you ever built a neighborhood where you've got lots as small?
Um, we, yeah, we build smaller in Florida. We build on, down there, they build on twenty-two-foot wide lots, not townhomes.
You could help us out a lot. If you could take pictures of those and show us what they look like.
Yeah, I, I would have to.
It's something that'll be a real art time. You look at this, take a look at this. A double-wide is twenty-four feet wide, not the long one, not where the front of it is, it's twenty-four feet wide. I'm not sure if you can give a double-wide any thought.
To speak to the building pad, the way the houses are designed, the garage is integrated into the house, so the house like wraps around the garage, and usually, a lot of times you have a bedroom above the garage, it's all, in case it's not a standalone garage, you got older homes, it's all, any of the new homes you see, the garages are integrated into the box of the home, so you do have the full thirty-foot building. A lot of times there's a family room, a great room on the backside of the garage with bedrooms above it, that's how my home is designed, and most of the homes that are built in the subdivisions that we designed now. Speaking to the lot width, I'd be happy to get some others, smaller thirty-foot, you know, kind of where that's going. We had a lot of conversation with planning commission about that, and I know it is sometimes hard to believe, but it is the trend that things are going towards for two reasons. One, a lot of cities are starting to push for it, as well as homeowners are asking for it, so the two are starting to merge. The reason for it is, every foot of, from the city perspective, at least what I'm told by cities, and I heard this from Wilmington Planning Commission, every foot of street the city has requires maintenance, it requires upgrading, it requires repaving. For every foot of street, you got an extra foot of sewer line to maintain, water line to maintain, all of these things that add up over the duration of a fifty-year period. And what we have found, and I can speak from a developer, it's not adding value. People want to believe that a fifty-foot wide lot, or a forty-foot wide lot, or a sixty-foot wide lot will mean a higher home value, create more real estate tax or different things. I can speak from experience, a builder will pay me the exact same price for a sixty-foot lot, or a fifty-foot lot, or a forty-foot lot, because they're building the same home on the builder. They're not building a different home. I will admit, you get up to a hundred foot or a hundred and twenty foot where you're building half-million-dollar homes, or six hundred, yes, that's a differential, but when you're trying to hit a price point that the average American can afford to have now, and I'll speak to the values, I can't guarantee home values, that's not something I can do, but we build these for builders all over. I would anticipate in the mid to upper twos is where these would end up selling. We build them across the country, we build them here in Peyton, we can't, we aren't a builder, I don't have any builder that can get below two-hundred thousand, just with what materials are, with what everything is today, and most of them on similar lots to this are closer to three-hundred, if they have a lot of options, are pushing three-twenty. And I can't say for sure if that's what will be here, I can confidently say it'll be above two, because I don't have a home anywhere in America that we're building lots for that's below two at this point. And I just pulled up to see what the average home values were, I hadn't looked, but surrounding this is mid-hundreds, maybe one-eighty, and that's on Zillow, I'm not speaking to anything, I just pulled up Zillow and looked at kind of the average of the home prices around there. So new homes selling for the mid-twos, I'm not an appraiser, I'm not at anything, but it should only increase home values in here. If you have higher-priced homes selling next to you, and they go out and they do counts, it helps. We go through lots of appraisals and lots of different processes for this. It will typically, if appraisers in that can find homes that is a similar size, and these aren't tiny homes, these are gonna be thirteen-hundred to twenty-five-hundred depending. When the builders went to this, they gotta get the cheaper lots the cities wanted, they're building up deeper, they're not really building smaller homes, they just stretch the homes deeper, because it shortens the road, it lessens the lot cost, it's not really changing their building cost, they're just changing the formation of the home. So it is a trend that city, a lot of cities have been proponents of, that it reduces the long-term maintenance for the city. That's what we've found across the country in different places.
I'm looking at your website, and I found a project in Springfield called Bridgewater.
Yeah.
There's some photos online, is that indicative of the style?
It would be very similar to that, those there have five-foot yard setbacks.
I would show you, but it's not much I can, but it's not much I can enter that into evidence, but...
And I don't, I should know this, probably if you're on our website, there's also a project, like you were talking about the smaller ones, I would get photos for it, but there's one in Florida called Hamilton Gardens, I don't know if it's still on our website, we just finished it, it's like two-hundred-and-eighty, but it had thirty-foot lots, twenty-two-foot homes in there, if I remember right.
Well, I think, and also, we're gonna reply to the beginning, but I don't know how to go with this project, but I will tell you this, this city's on record, and plenty more have residential buildings, and I think, you know, from my own standpoint, I can't tell you how to run this, because you know what's probably the bullet, and I've been a developer, I've been, right around the corner where Lehman Park Drive is, I developed that, where Kelly Drive is, I developed that.
You know the challenges?
So I know the challenges, and I know the neighborhood, and I know what you guys are going through. I just want to make sure that what we do, we do right, we answer as many questions as we can, because what people don't know concerns them more than anything else, and if you could show us some pictures of what you want to do, I think that'll go a long way.
When you get out to the next meeting, I said a minute ahead of time to Andrew, they won't be, there'll be graphical representations, we have not selected a builder here yet, so I can't say this is identical, but we can pull similar projects that we're building in the subdivisions that we're already doing, so that you have an idea of what it will look like.
Are there gonna be on-street mailboxes, or mailboxes gonna be fixed to the home or do it down?
It would be, I guess we haven't addressed that, but the only thing I've, we've been allowed to build by the postal service anymore is the game boxes, that they're the system unit, you know, it's not individual mailboxes, and it can't be on the house.
It's more of a, the postal service won't deliver.
You have to put in the, whatever, those individual banks that have like sixteen right...
Yeah.
And that's the only thing they'll approve at this point, and you kind of spread them out, you know, a lot of times where people can, you know, sixteen kind of together, or somebody will put thirty-two together.
Thank you.
Just, just to, to, to follow, you say that these are gonna be around two-hundred-thousand-dollar homes. So we have a subdivision, and I would consider similar to what you're talking about here, only with a little bigger home and a little bigger lot, and I have yet to see those homes go for two-hundred-thousand dollars in this area.
I don't know the subdivision.
Where is the state and the area that these homes are going for two-hundred-thousand? And I would like to see something in an adjacent county, I don't mean, I'm not talking Montgomery, I'm not talking Butler, I'm not talking, you know, up that way, I'm talking in rural southern Ohio, like a Washington courthouse, a Hillsborough. Those are the type, I mean, that is a comparable city to what Wilmington is.
The Springfield site that, or Springfield site that he just pulled up, I think the average right now is two-sixty-two.
Okay, that, once again, Springfield, Ohio, is not as ag-related as Wilmington, Ohio, or Washington courthouse, or Hillsborough. I think that we would have, I could be wrong, I'm not a developer, I'm not a real estate agent, none of the such, but I do know how to find information, I do pay attention to property values, I am a property owner in multiple counties, and I'm telling you, I don't, I don't, I don't see two-hundred-thousand dollars. I mean, we've got nicer homes just off of 134, back off of Florence Avenue, back in where Mr. Evelyn lives, those aren't two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar homes.
So I would, to try to answer that, I can't speak to Hillsborough and others, I don't know anybody that built a subdivision there. If I'm being transparent, we've worked with the city for over a year, year and a half, we've looked at Wilmington for a while, we came here because, to your comment, SAP has been great, and Taylor has been great, that there needs to be growth in Wilmington, there's a lot of jobs coming to Wilmington, and there's a need for housing in Wilmington. We're stretching to come here from what we would normally do, I'm being honest, like, we're doing stuff in Springfield, and we do a lot of the outside markets. We haven't gone to Hillsborough or those others, Washington courthouse yet, because they don't have the job growth that Wilmington has at the moment. I'm not gonna say they won't, there's the new plant and things coming in up north, but, so we are starting to look further up seventy-one, but we're not there yet. Wilmington is something where we believe that growth is there, and when we don't have the residential sales, new home sales, we have to look at rental data and the other things, and start to compare, if somebody's renting a house at these price points, how much more can that monthly payment go up that they would buy before they would stay in the rental, and we have to start using some of that data to justify it. We and the builders spend a lot of time looking at the data, because we've already spent several hundred thousand, we're gonna invest several million on a gamble, and if they don't sell for two-hundred thousand, it doesn't work for everybody. So we look into the data pretty heavily to believe that Wilmington will support this, and that it can be done.
Well, believe me, I'm playing devil's advocate here, because this, these are the questions that I can guarantee you, that other people that think like me, that are my age and older, a little younger, are all gonna have the same question, you know, why can't I go sell my eighty-thousand-dollar home in South Ridge for two-hundred-thousand dollars? I mean, we see it, we see it at that.
I really think, I was just kind of quickly looking at some stuff online, I think that when we start to see some representation of what's gonna be built, it makes a lot more sense to me, I'll say that. I was like, oh, okay, two-story style house, you know, it's block-style house, I understand.
We just need to get the city behind it, or I mean, charge the community.
If you build a new construction, two thousand, twenty-two-hundred square foot house, I own a house, house itself, which is fourteen-hundred and change square foot, right? It's, it's not gonna sell for two-hundred-thousand dollars, well, okay, I'm close to that, but, you know, it's what it is, but I could see, once I kind of started seeing some visual representation of what's there, I think that would really help make it make more sense, because I couldn't wrap my head around it.
This has probably been one of the longer public hearings we've had, and I hope you can wrap this fairly soon, but if you have another burning question, please.
I'd be happy to answer it, I should.
And thank you.
We are excited to try to partner with Wilmington, and obviously, it's gotta work for everybody, but we do believe in the stuff everybody's trying to grow here, and that the job formation and the housing, so we want to work with the city.
And we close, everybody got their questions answered? I will close, the public here.
Thank you all.
We understand your concerns.
The EV start, charging stations are almost included in the city, they have a parking lot.
Oh, so they're coming out?
I just want to clarify that those are not within the tax areas, the electric charging company installed, they did a little repair work. It's over now, not working.
No, you're good.
We just need to keep the...
I couldn't hear over the audience, really.
You mean they weren't paying attention to me when I was talking?
I looked up.
Shocking.
Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, in Devertonville, of course, there was a major groundbreaking on that new battery plant. March sixth, reconstruction of David's Drive will begin. You will not be able to get from David's Drive to 134, we will only get off of 134 on David's Drive. See, I think those closures actually start on the sixth, the drought is starting now. We've got some community events, Saturday the fourth, that's this Saturday, seven-thirty at the theater in Hotel California, which is Eagles tribute. On the eleventh, they're having Zach Brown, Twenty Bride, which is Zach Brown tribute. And then the Drowsy Labs are coming back on the eighteenth, and Lutz hanging on, which is Frankie Valli, and the four of these seasons are gonna be on the fifteenth. March eighth, twelve to six-thirty P.M., in the community room is the Blood Drive, hosted by Cleveland Memorial Hospital. And of course, don't forget about the local churches that are doing their lunches and meals. I was reading my Ohio County Journal, and I saw in here that Ashley Rose, the organization director for Clinton, Fayette Green, and Warren County Farm Bureaus, is the recipient of the 2022 Yvonne Lassico Preservation Perseverance Prize, it's known as the Y Prize, and the award is presented to the Ohio Farm Bureau Foundation that recognizes individuals for their innovative work in farmers' mental health wellness initiatives. So congratulations to Ashley, and figure, tell her how much we appreciate what she does.
She does excellent.
Yes, yes, she does. If you want to make a difference in our community, sign up for Clean Up Wilmington, monthly volunteer events, the first event of 2023 is gonna be Saturday the twenty-first, we start at nine-thirty A.M., the location will be announced. Interested, contact Ann, Ann van, three-eight-two-six-five-oh-nine, or avans@wilmingtonoh.org. And speaking of Ann, everybody get recorded. Well, what good news she just continues to get our town cleaned up, some of these before-and-after pictures are quite amazing, where developers come in and look at properties that weren't in the best shape and saw opportunity, fix them up, and now they're owner-occupied homes. Tire recycling event, if you got some tires sitting around in the garage you want to get rid of, it's gonna cost you a dollar, have to be under seventeen inches, and that's gonna be April twenty-ninth, nine to noon, you must pre-register, and go into Clinton County, OHUS, backslash recycling to sign up. We're also gonna do paint household waste, collections again, gas, oil, pesticide, herbicides, again, if you got this stuff sitting around in the garage you want to get rid of it, and that'll be on the twenty-ninth again. I hope you all have a chance to see the plaque out on the wall next to municipal court, it's home base, for the home plate. And I don't know if any of you knew this, but the judge's daughter, he was providing court, he literally had a home base at his feet, and it had to do with treating everybody, he, home base is the same size for the pros, as it is my granddaughter, who's out there at the park. But anyway, we got a thank you letter from, so you got a thank you letter from the daughter even later, for making that possible, but I also gotta give a lot of credit to Brian Kratz for having foresight to pull that off. Back to you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Who represented the city, I know the county was represented by commissioners, who represented the city of the groundbreaking of the Honda plant?
We were on both.
That answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Audrey Vance, anything for us tonight?
Yes, Mr. President, I think most of the elected officials probably received an email in the last day, maybe today, from the state auditor's office about the audit that they do, this is a standard, every couple of years, they come in and they audit how we report to ERS, that is all this is, it's not anything any more than that, and we have already responded, and it was done, and we'll just await their response. But I just thought, perhaps you were curious about that, the state of Ohio will usually always send you communication in addition when you have to search. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. The safety service director, Bruce Schatter, is not with us, but I imagine that Rick will be taking his place.
I'll tell you how Brian has two pieces of legislation for you to consider, the first one is enter into a agreement to do a new save-up to school plan, real plan's at least fifteen years old, so we're gonna get any new save-up... Our plan's at least fifteen years old, so we're going to get any new save up school money. We have to update the plan. Um, we'll end up with, don't know what the bill leads to. It's probably school building type stuff, could be privacy rights and fossilized or whatever. So this park is fully paid for by O D I, um, and it's all just planning itself. The schools will be evolved, right, so, um, I don't feel that people and, uh, you know, I don't have to put it, so.
Any questions? Could we have someone bring this legislation forward, please?
I'll make a motion, uh, first reading on legislation, R twenty-three fifteen.
Second.
Motion, okay, second. Look, how soon we finish. All in favor, second by the second. Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor or designate to repair and execute an application for safe routes to school, S R T S, school travel plan development, and to submit same to the Ohio Department of Transportation and declaring.
I'll move to suspend the rules and regulations, give second, third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, to suspend the rules, we have roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-three thirteen passes.
The other item is to accept a donation from Joseph Harden to go to his cleanup project that, and then, uh, picked up, what we got a form with amongst.
Any questions? Can we move this legislation forward, please?
I'll make a motion to, uh, do, uh, first reading on resolution R thirteen fourteen.
Twenty-three fourteen.
I'm sorry, twenty-three fourteen.
Second.
Motion, second, for first reading, resolution twenty-three fourteen. All in favor, second by the second. Any opposed? Motion carries, may we have first reading, please?
A resolution accepting a gift from Joseph Harden from the City of Wilmington Code Enforcement Department and declaring.
Uh, move to suspend the rules and regulations, give a second, third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, for suspension of the rules, roll call, please.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
And Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-three fourteen passes.
You're going to do a, I want to make a quick comment on what Joe Harden's done. He has a business on Landon Avenue, and when Anna got her cleanup crew together and cleaned up the Landon Poly Avenue area, he was so impressed with what they did. If you remember, a year ago, he gave us five hundred bucks, trash bags, and picker uppers, and rubber gloves, and that kind of stuff. So maybe you can't get out there and help us on Saturday to pick up stuff, but we'll welcome any donations up our list. I just want to thank Joe personally for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, is that all we have? Thank you. All right, moving into, uh, many reports in action. City revitalization committee, Mr. McKay.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. City services committee, Mr. Evelyn.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finance committee, Mr. Aubrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items. Our first item is three readings on ordinance twenty-three thirteen, some supplemental appropriations, a summary of the items, uh, outlines those pretty well. Uh, were there any questions for other items? Have we still, uh, these three supplemental? All right, seeing none, I'll move to give the first reading only on ordinance twenty-three thirteen by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, by Osborne, first reading, ordinance twenty-three thirteen. All in favor, second by the second. Any opposed? First reading, please.
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Uh, move to suspend the rules and regulations, give ordinance twenty-three thirteen, second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, for suspension of the rules, roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading?
In ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
For passage. Motion, second, for passage, ordinance twenty-three thirteen, roll call, please.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
And Albright?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-three thirteen passes.
And our second item is just to tidy up some things, uh, and now require any legislation or report payment of expenses incurred in prior fiscal years to resolution twenty-three sixteen. Those items are listed in our packets, uh, if there are any specific questions on them. Seeing none, I move to give the first reading only on resolution twenty-three sixteen by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, first reading, resolution twenty-three sixteen, all in favor, second by the second. Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing payment of expenses incurred in prior school.
Uh, move to suspend the rules and regulations, give resolution twenty-three sixteen, second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, for suspension of the rules, roll call, please.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading?
A resolution authorizing payment of expenses incurred in prior fiscal year.
For passage of resolution twenty-three sixteen?
Second.
Motion, second, for passage of this resolution twenty-three sixteen, roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-three sixteen passes.
An additional item, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Aubrey. Judiciary committee, Mr. Perky.
I have no fishing, I'm just a.
That was like I, I dropped a drink, I was like, all right.
I know, just making sure it wasn't weak. Uh, I do have several things that we're going to discuss tonight, so, uh, the first three of them are, are carryovers from our last meeting, so we'll run through them quickly, give an opportunity for any discussion or questions, uh, if there aren't, then we'll move straight for legislation, so. Uh, the first item on my agenda, and I have ordinance twenty-three oh-nine, uh, remember we had our discussion about the changes to the animal and fowl section of our ordinance? Uh, remember, these changes allow us to, at a later date, we continue to choose to do so, to implement a program to help, uh, trap their release of cats, if we can get that over. But what the, this changes legislation does is allow us not to implement it later, so, uh, clears up some of the older inconsistencies in the law, and I think we've gone over it multiple times, but I'll make sure there's no questions or comments or anybody has. Okay, seeing none, I'll move for the, uh, suspension of the rules and regulations, give ordinance twenty-three oh-nine a second, third reading by title only.
Second.
I'm sorry. We end up, I, I need to draw that motion, because I can't read, apparently.
I better pretend I didn't hear.
I will draw that motion. Uh, I'd like to move to give a second reading of ordinance twenty-three oh-nine, make that one.
Second.
Motion by Perky, second by Albright, second reading, ordinance twenty-three oh-nine. Uh, I think we can do, uh, a voice, all in favor, saying I. Any opposed? Second reading, please.
In ordinance amending certain sections and adding certain sections to chapter five zero five, animals and fowl, Wilmington, on Friday.
We'll ask for a third reading at our next regularly scheduled council meeting on these things. All right, item number two on my agenda is ordinance twenty-three eleven. Uh, this is to amend the codified ordinances to adjust for traffic code. Uh, so ordinance eleven deals with traffic code, and ordinance twelve deals with the, uh, the general offenses code. So if you remember, every year, the state of Ohio revised code adapts, and we have to adapt our, uh, traffic laws and general offense code to match, uh, any changes that get made. And we had a lot of fun with this one. This was a difficult year. Sometimes it seems pretty easy, and this year it was not at all. Uh, there weren't a ton of substantive changes, but there was just a lot of inconsistent, the state doesn't assign us a representative, for lack of a better word, to kind of help, uh, take our existing code and process it through, you know, the changes that have been made. Uh, this year, there were a lot of holes and inconsistencies and things that were found, so.
She doesn't work there anymore.
Okay, well, uh, we've, we've managed to get our way through it, and, uh, I, I hate to call this housekeeping, but it is something that we have to do annually because the laws have changed and we have to adapt. Uh, so, we're going to go ahead on, uh, ordinance twenty-three eleven, which deals specifically with traffic code, and I'll go ahead and move for the second and the third reading of ordinance twenty-three eleven.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'll move to suspend the rules and regulations, and give a second, third reading of ordinance twenty-three eleven by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, for suspension of the rules, ordinance twenty-three eleven, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Here is, may we have second, third reading?
In ordinance to amend the codified ordinances of the City of Wilmington, Ohio, to provide amendments to certain sections of Part Three traffic code, to provide for codification, to provide for supplementation, to provide for penalties, to provide for severability, to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinance, to provide effective date, and for other.
I'd like to move for passage if read.
Second. Motion, second, for passage, roll call, please.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
And Snar?
Yes.
Motion, twenty-three eleven passes.
Great, uh, the next one is, like I said, ordinance twenty-three twelve is the, the same type of legislation for the general offense code, so, any questions or comments or discussion? Seeing none, I will move to suspend the rules and regulations, give ordinance twenty-three twelve a second and a third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, for suspension of the rules, roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Motion passes, may we have second, third reading?
In ordinance to amend the codified ordinances of the City of Wilmington, Ohio, to provide amendments, deletions, and repeals to certain sections of Part Five, General Offenses Code, to provide for codification, to provide for supplementation, to provide for penalties, to provide for severability, to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other.
I moved to pass ordinance twenty-three twelve as read.
Second.
Motion, second, for passage, ordinance twenty-three twelve, roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty-three twelve passes.
Okay, so, moving on to the next thing. This was, uh, based on our public hearing tonight. Uh, we are slated to have a first reading, a first reading ordinance twenty-three fourteen. Does everyone have a chance to look through that when we were discussing what the P U D includes? Uh, that's where the language came from. Uh, so, this is a philosophical discussion that we've had multiple times before. Uh, I know I've always stated, I, I believe in pushing, I believe in letting the, we don't vote for something until we vote finally, we have to have three readings on it, so, I believe in letting the readings happen, even if we intend to amend this later. Uh, some of my, uh, colleagues up here disagree, they'd rather not read it at all until it's accurate. Uh, they have to have three readings either way, so I'm going to open it up for discussion amongst council. Do we want to, uh, go ahead and push for a reading tonight, or would you prefer philosophically to have it, uh, wait until some of, I know Nick had some questions, I had a few questions. Uh, I know that there were some, still some things that the city has for the developer to be corrected in the P U D, some things that want to be answered, we want to.
Councilman Perky, I mean, my, I guess my question is, you are intending this to be in three separate readings?
Absolutely.
But we're not going to do a first and then a second, third?
No, no.
Okay. I, I wanted that clarified and on the record.
Yeah.
You want me to go with my gut feeling? I'm not comfortable with it. But we're not gonna do a first and then a second, third?
No, no.
Okay. I wanted that clarified and on the record.
Yeah.
You want me to go with my gut feeling? I'm not comfortable with it.
So I'm not, I'm just, I really, I'm here to talk, I don't want to start cat town town vote yet, but the idea is, we're at a point where you can either just extract this from the agenda and I don't think we're just not moving forward, which is probably the way to go. I'll make sure Brett tells me the procedure away, but, or we could have a first reading on it and, you know, make any changes be entered into the record as an amendment if there's going to be a second reading and that, so.
Mr. President, I, I was kind of pleased with the response we got from the developers tonight, at least from the standpoint, it looks like they're willing to work with us. If we vote, you know, it's, some of you probably don't attend council meetings very often, so you may not be familiar with this procedure, we go through reading, 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 and then vote to pass or turn down the legislation. Law requires us to go through three readings, so even though you vote yes on a first reading, second reading, third reading, you can still vote no on the ordinance itself, on the passage. Really voting yes, all it does is really move it along, so nothing should be read in and, you know, assuming I'm gonna vote yes on this, that doesn't mean I'm gonna vote for the ordinance, it just simply means I'm moving along with the agenda to see how the developers aren't working with us.
So I'll tell you, I'll give you one last thing before I move forward, but I'm inclined to, because we have six weeks still to discuss this and as to push forward, and procedurally, if at any point in a future meeting of council felt that maybe not want to move forward, we can cease moving forward, so. It is an open, transparent process, but I want to make sure that everyone in attendance understands that, so Nick, thank you for taking time to, to kind of explain that, so.
Appreciate that, Kurt.
Absolutely, and it's important. I mean, I know that we have a lot of discussion here in these meetings that impact our community and then there's a lot of, it feels like, yeah, first reading, second reading, third reading, done, for, you know, we kind of speed through that stuff, but that's the, that's the law, unfortunately, that's how it has to go, so. Seeing that, I'll move for the first.
I thought Andrea was wanting me to mention that going forward, if you decide to have a reading today, we can amend to include another section that will obviously include those stipulations and provisions that everybody who's concerned with the rest.
Yes.
So we can add stip, we can add stipulations to this because it is a preliminary, is everyone clear about the PUD process itself, because we really haven't talked about that, but this is, they did a preliminary PUD approval at planning commission, then you do a preliminary PUD approval and you can make stipulations to your approval that then goes back to planning commission and planning commission approves the final PUD based upon all stipulations. So this is your chance to give input into the final PUD, so that's.
That's good, good information as well.
I just wanted to make sure that you.
And I forget the young lady's name I mentioned earlier, had a question about, you know, is the PUD going to specify a percentage of square footage on the lot or, you know, or not? So if it was deemed necessary at some point to add that for a next reading, would it be added in and just, once we finally have that last vote to pass, thumbs up, thumbs down, if it were to go on that last, whatever's in the language at that point would be the final version, so.
And one more thing.
Yes.
So also, in the plans that you got, it was the preliminary PUD, but there were also some construction plans, not fully formed, but pretty far along, right, but, which was like an extra bonus that you wouldn't normally get with your PUD, because it's a zoning decision, not approval of construction plans, which happens on the engineering side of the city. Just so you know that you're not approving construction plans, you're approving the layout. Okay.
Okay, so that's, I'll move for the first reading of ordinance twenty-three fourteen by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, by Osborne, first reading, ordinance twenty-three fourteen, let's have her roll call please.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Clearman?
No.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Motion carries, today we have first reading of this.
An ordinance approving the preliminary planned unit development plan for DPC management LLC and amending the zoning map by changing the zoning of Brook property to include a PUD planned unit development overlay on TN traditional neighborhood parcels located on Lincoln Street in the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
Thank you. Let's schedule a second reading for the next regular scheduled council meeting. I know it's not a public hearing, but it would be very helpful if you guys were both able to be here today. I know that I would anticipate there would be photos for people, you know, to see at that point that any of the changes we discussed, I know Nick had some questions about the depth and specificity of where the station boxes will be, some of the drains will be, so I know that all that will be coming and we'll all look forward to seeing that for any future reading, so it'll be great if you can be here for it.
Can you schedule a public hearing before?
What's that?
Why can't you schedule a public hearing before the second reading?
Well, we, I mean, procedurally, we have the opportunity to have discussion on every motion, so I think there.
It's not required, right?
It is not required, we have a, a single public hearing is required with thirty days' notice prior.
We'll have appropriate discussion so that everyone gets to be here.
I do think it might be worth pointing this out, that maybe in the interest of all of you attending in the audience, maybe we'll try to bump it up to a different spot of the agenda, because it is, you know, tonight we have a public hearing right at the beginning and then we're an hour and a half, hour thirty-five later, just finally discussing it, so. But like I said, we can, we can bring that up for our next meeting, so I'll anticipate all the changes and answers to the questions that were asked, so thank you guys. Last thing on my agenda is another new, another new development that came up this week. I'm gonna probably have to lean on Andrea pretty hard for this one, too. Resolution twenty-three fifteen is a request for a reduction of waiver, or waiver of active open space in Timberland Phase Six subdivision. So I believe she's pulled it up there. The way I understood, and I was not able to get into a meeting to discuss this, the way I understand is, you know, our subdivision requirements have, or requirements have a set amount of space that's unused green space, planned green space. If you've been in Timberland, you know there's already some park area, there's some walking trails, things like that, but also just open, unplanned green space that's required to be there as well, just to, to provide the, the, the right feel for the neighborhood.
Are you, are you here with, be able to answer the question?
Oh, perfect.
I, I thought you were.
I was, I was gonna win it, but.
The, the rule on this is that when you make a subdivision, you have to have five percent of your platted, of the plot has to go towards open space. Of that five percent, twenty-five percent is supposed to go towards active open space, which is a playground or a trail or something that you can interact with. A developer has the option of asking city council for a reduction of that or a waiver of that, and that's where we are. Okay.
And you are?
Yes, so, good evening, I'm Etta Reed with Bear Becker, I'm here on behalf of J.A. Development and Home Properties. They are the two property owners that are part of the Timberland Development. Is that good?
You might, might.
So Andrea did a great job explaining really what your code's about, so I'll kind of explain why we are asking for this waiver, and if you don't mind, I'd like to go over to the.
Absolutely.
Very good. Okay, so code requires five percent open space, we're providing over sixteen percent open space, so we are providing obviously more open space than is required. Code also requires that we provide the, just under an acre worth of active open space. But as you can see in the exhibit we have here, is that we have an open space here, which is already constructed, if you go out there, we have an open space here and then two other open spaces up to the north. This open space is predominantly a detention basin, and what we're proposing to do is to put a very nice playground, some benches, and then a landscape buffer, because we have a home, you know, the rear of the home here, we don't want those folks having to look right into the neighborhood playground, so we will have a nice landscape buffer here for them. This open space is somewhat wooded, but it also has, we're gonna have to put a detention basin in there also as required, and so there's really no room in that one to provide any active open space. But then the last two, the larger chunks of open space, and it's, you can kind of see under the shading, it's heavily wooded and the topography, if you're familiar with the area, there's drainageways through there, it's really steep, so if we were to put, construct, put some type of open space in there, one, the trees are going away, two, it's really gonna rechange the whole feel and the topography. And so the developer feels it's more important to keep the buffer and the topography how it is than to provide an active open space. We will have sidewalk on both sides of our street, you have a wonderful elementary school, playgrounds, ballfields, trails, and as you had said, there's trails already in the rest of Timberland, so we feel like there's plenty of active amenities in the area that the residents could use, so we are asking that we be permitted to have a reduction in the amount of required active open space. So I can answer any questions you may have.
So if you remember, we redid our zoning laws four years ago now. This is the first development that we've had since we've changed, since we instituted our current zoning code, so this is the first time we've been asked for this. I always immediately, as soon as you say first time, my precedent flag pops up, you know, I don't know that I, I have, it makes my ears perk up whenever I have to think about something that could now be used as a precedent to skirt a system that was designed for a reason. So the, the choice that we have to make and discuss is how do we feel that this is right for this development and we want to provide a waiver, which would be our job, the nature of the zoning code leaves us that option, or is it something, you know, that we, hey, I don't want to set a precedent for this? Given, you know, we're all gonna have our opinion about it, but given the topography of the land that's left, I tend to agree, but it is, it is important that we're very mindful of what precedent looks like when you, when you start these. Now, we have discussed two of them, but I don't anticipate there being hundreds of applications for new developments in the city of Wilmington, but it is important for us to be mindful of that. So I'm more than welcome to open up the floor for discussion, but is our intent to have a first reading on twenty-three fifteen tonight? So are there any questions from council or any discussion you want to have about this?
So everyone in the neighborhood has access to the whole school playground?
I didn't, I don't know that, I didn't think they did.
It's fenced.
It's fenced. They don't have access to that.
It's, it's open till dark.
Right, and there's a sign that says it's open.
Which is standard. And the design, so there are a couple of things to discuss here, the intention behind this is that if you construct a new development, that you build it the way that we want it to be built, right, you want to have access for walking trails and green space and things like that. In this case, when you're adding on, is it, does it maintain the integrity or the institution or the intent maybe as a support of what is already there and still fulfill our zoning code? So I, I have a little bit of question mark both ways, but I think that we have, again, several readings to discuss and think about and figure it out. For me, I see kind of how this still fits within the Timberland look to me, but again, I'm not up here to make that decision, I'm making the decision how it fits with it, so. Any other questions, discussion?
Can you explain, or can you explain, again, the five percent and the fourteen percent? Straighten that off, will you?
Absolutely, so your code requires of the whole development, which is, let me bear our numbers here, seventy, is like seventy-four acres of total development. So code requires us to provide a minimum of five percent of that land has to be set aside as open space, so we need to set aside three point seven acres as open space. Of that three point seven acres, we have to set aside twenty-five percent of that, which is just under an acre, it's point nine two acres of active open space. And so we're asking to set aside point oh three acres, which is the playground, as it is active open space.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot of numbers, I get it.
So, yeah, are there any other questions or discussion you want to have here? Like I said, I think I've made my piece on, my two, my two, my duality made, brought to light here, but. Okay. Is there any other discussion from, if there's no other discussion, then I'll move for the first reading for resolution twenty-three fifteen by title.
Second.
Motion, first, second, by Albright, first reading, resolution twenty-three fifteen. All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
First reading, please.
A resolution authorizing a reduction or waiver of active open space in Timberland Phase Six.
Thank you. Could we schedule these second readings for our next regular scheduled council meeting on the sixteenth? And believe it or not, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Perky. Public Works Enterprise Committee.
Do you have a report, Mr. President?
Thank you. Reports to council, you have the income tax report, February twenty twenty-three, what is it? Move to be accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion, second, to accept the income tax report as presented, all in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
May you vote. We are accepting the income tax report as accepted, now we move into the portion of the day that's open. I, most of you know the rules, but we have a list of votes that wish to speak, you can comment as many as you like, and you will hear the time of your own.
I asked if I can jump online.
Yeah, I can, you know what, Matt?
I had something I wanted to discuss during last meeting.
I have your name right there, I just went right on.
We had an executive session, so I, we, everyone left, and we, it's hard to have a public discussion when there's no public here, so I just, I'll save it here. And I know we've gone on a long time tonight, so I'll try to be brief, but, then several people asked me about this and one of the things that comes up in our community a lot, a question was posed to me is, what do we have to do so that I don't walk out in front of my house and see a needle on my sidewalk? And I've had this question put to me several different ways, by several different people at several different times, and I, you know, I, you start, that gets into a really philosophical discussion, that can go down many different avenues, but I thought, you know what, I know somebody who might be able to have some ideas about this, and I ran into, most of you know Leah Lorenz and Jason Stoops, I ran into Leah and she said, hey, I know somebody who's working on something like this, and I said, well, I know somebody who has some ideas about it, so I reached out, we put together a little meeting, a gentleman named Denny, and I forget his last name, he, he works for a group called the Harm Reduction Collaborative Southwest Ohio, and there are harm reduction collaboratives all over the state, I think there are sixteen of them all together, but he serves a five county area that includes Clinton County, Warren County, Brown County, Adams, and maybe Highland, I forget, but it was a five county race, so we were able to kind of get together and have a meeting with this gentleman. He said, well, the answer that you, if you want to know how to get needles off the street, the answer that we discussed is, is the least popular answer there is, but it's needle exchange program. And that's what I found is, you'll say, okay, so what does this look like? And we had a long discussion, I don't like the word enable, so, you know, we talked through kind of logistics of that, and so what I, is like, what harm reduction is a more, is a larger, more holistic way of that, but we had a very, several hour discussion of how, I said, so explain to me how this works, and the idea was, you know, essentially if you could commoditize, you know, turn it into a commodity, would somebody, would somebody would have value? And so while it was tough for me to kind of wrap my head around it first, we looked at some communities that had some success with it, and it was a discussion that, what I then found out was that somebody had tried to work on this here already and it was, it requires multiple jurisdictions and things like that, but we ended up having a very productive discussion and it requires me to open my mind a little bit, but it was something I think I'm going to bring up to council and anybody here, but if I can get the gentleman here to come kind of have a talk about it, it's the first viable thing that I've been able to find online, by, without discussing with anybody, that how do you, how do you get needles off the street? And what seemed the most counterproductive answer I found is what I kept finding over and over again, so after I reached out to Denny, I wanted to kind of run my counsel into something he might be interested in, I think we could schedule time to bring him in and have him, you know, do a five minute, we talked for a long time, but, talk, you know, do, do a elevator speech, so to speak, and he does work with, topic for another day, but he does work with Warren County, who we have some mental health services levy with, that we're not getting a whole lot of value out of the scene yet, but there are some resources available to help get things like that off the ground. He's also grant funded through the state and federal government as well, so there's some ways to talk, but I wanted to begin the conversation, but it's something that I wanted to put out there. It was such, it took me such a long time and a lot of reading and thinking about it to really kind of wrap my head around the concept. I'll see if I can get some, some literature sent to me that I can pass along to council, but I wanted to, to bring it up here, it's not something we're gonna talk about at the next meeting per se, but I just wanted to put it out there and see if, if there was interest, I could bring more, more information for it, so. The, the thing that struck me the most was they, they started looking at how much it costs to, to care for people who have diseases or get sick that don't have any resources to pay for them versus how much does it cost to try this program or try that program? So there's a lot of interesting learning there, and I'm gonna continue to try to find other methods to answer the question of how do we keep needles from shot off my sidewalk, but this is the first, I know it's often said, hey, are we, are we trying to find anything or do anything to move forward, and I wanted to bring it out for, for all of you council and, and the public here tonight, but to let us know that we have started trying to find some, some ways to chip away at things that are happening in the community, so with your support, I'll try to schedule that sometime in the, in the near future to, to bring him in and have him do a little pitch, we can discuss it there, so. Thank you for indulging, I appreciate it, get out of the way and let everyone else talk.
Sure. Sorry I skipped.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine.
All right, now we'll move into the vote in the public. I believe Perky has a list of names.
First up is Judy Gano.
Thank you.
As I said earlier, three minutes are left.
Okay, I think I can do it.
Thank you.
For the record, my name is Judy Gano, I live at twenty-two thirty-nine Gano Road, and I've been a resident of Clinton County since July twenty-one nineteen ninety-nine. The significance of that date is, it's the day after I married my husband Alan Gano. Alan and I have a daughter, Jaclyn Gano, she's a veterinarian who recently purchased Countryview Pet Hospital out on Seventy-three near the interstate. My family and I are vested in our community. We built our house on farmland that's been in Alan's family for over a hundred and fifty years. After moving here, I became the prosecutor for the city of Wilmington and for the village of Blanchett, and I held that position until nineteen ninety-two, when Nick Eblin appointed me as the Director of Law. Thank you very much. I held that position for eight, almost eight years. At the end of nineteen ninety-nine, my family and I moved to Gano Road on the family farm. And obviously, I couldn't be Director of Law for the city of Wilmington if I didn't live in the city of Wilmington. Lucky for me, the position's a prosecutor and Director of Law of part-time, so I continued to practice law during that time, and for a few years I practiced law with my husband Alan Gano at Gano Law Offices. In nineteen ninety-two, when he became the pro juvenile judge, I continued practicing law. Alan retired a few years ago, everyone keeps asking me when I'm gonna retire, but I don't have anything else to do, and my parents taught me to work. Work is all I know how to do. I'm still actively practicing law today, but in addition to my private practice of law. But in addition to my private practice of law, Judge Tim Roddick appointed me as the magistrate in the Clinton County Municipal Court. So for over three years, I sat on the bench in the Clinton County Municipal Court as the magistrate. I heard and decided cases. I tried to treat everybody with respect that came before the court, and I decided the cases based strictly on the facts that came before me. Now, I'll tell you, I'll be honest, not everybody was happy with my decisions. In any type of court case, somebody wins, somebody loses. But like Judge Dodd, I tried to be fair to everybody, and I can tell you that, at least in my view, everybody that came before me got equal justice under the law. And as icing on the cake, in two thousand and one and two thousand and five, Judge Nancy Ham in Melrose Fatt County hired me as her magistrate. So I sat on the bench in Fatt County and heard and decided cases. And again, I treated everybody that came before the court with respect and fairness, and I decided the cases based on that. Now, I have passed out my resume, and I think that, uh, based on my vast legal experience and my community service, that I'm the most qualified person for that position. Sorry to go over. I'm sorry I don't have enough to pass out, but being one wants one. My website is ganoforproject.com. Anything you ever wanted to know.
Next is Pat Healy.
I'm Pat Healy, fourteen forty-seven, Rich Circle, Wilmington. And I can tell you how to get the needle called the side. Get the people using the needles despite. And as a candidate for mayor, meeting with community leaders, residents, and business owners of life, I've often heard the question, what's happened for Wilmington? They say they are seeing homeless in Camden, public drug use crimes, and individuals who too often have unpredictable behavior. But we're dealing with two distinct categories of homeless individuals. The first is the needy who are seeking help because of devastating medical bills, loss of jobs, domestic violence, or loss of a loved one. And we want to help the truly needy. Second, there are those on the streets who wander from place to place without lawful or visible means of support, and all too often support themselves by aggressively panhandling or stealing. And Webster defines them as vagrants. Many are suffering from drug and alcohol addiction, serious mental illness, committing crimes, and as a result, are dramatically lowering the community quality of life. A popular business owner on Sugar Tree Street told me she had been dealing with vagrants' deaths for months, and frustration hit a breaking point when she and her husband saw two vagrants engaging in sexual relations behind her store in the middle of day, in the middle of town. And a week later, she closed her store. We cannot have it both ways, bringing people to town for charitable reasons and then ignoring the disorder they bring with them. We were told code enforcement continues working hard to discourage heavy crime and vandalism, problems that remain stubbornly difficult to resolve. These efforts, by any measure, are not working. And we're told a problem of vagrancy which is plaguing the city with needles on the bike track, trailer, with children fighting dirty needles in parks, with vagrants living illegally in Camden for private property. When we're told that these problems are unsolvable or acceptable because of the so-called times we live in, that is wrong. It's time to put a stop to it. Although some can or will not address this urgent problem, I can, and I will, and we will. Together, we can turn Wilmington around. I have the knowledge and experience as a former loaner sheriff to remedy the crime issue. If given the opportunity, I will bring the same resolve to the office of mayor. I will work closely with the police department to communicate often with city council, and together, as a comeback team, will show these problems are not acceptable, and they are soluble. There's a malaise, a perception, that's infecting our city right now. We should feel safe walking downtown, visiting the library, and using our trail. Elected mayor, it's my priority to make the city clean and safe. Margaret Mead said, never doubt, the small group of thoughtful, committed citizens.
Are you ready to wrap it up, sir?
Indeed.
You're running your time.
Indeed, it's the only thing that ever happens.
Hey, you're right.
Yeah, it's wrapped up.
Thank you. I didn't mean to step on your last line. Do you want to say it again?
What's that?
I didn't mean to step on your last line.
You already did it now.
That's why I said.
It doesn't matter. I think the point has been made. We need to put stop to this. And this isn't one person, it's everybody.
Okay, so, uh, let's see, Amy, you've already spoken. Uh, Jane Johns is next on the list. District Attorney, I have your address.
Hi, everyone. It's Jane Johns. I handed you guys a packet. Um, sorry, it's very elementary, but it's the best I could do, short notice at home. Um, I want to address, uh, number one that you have with the packet. That is a tent camp that I found in the southeast park and behind used Wilmington College baseball, um, batting cage. There's two camps there. The southeast park one is probably the most disturbing one where you can see that there are sex toys within the sightline of the children's play area, along with needles and trash and canned goods. It's very, very disturbing. Now, the camp behind, uh, the green batting cage at Wilmington College, it's down along the creek line. There also is pornographic material back there, and there is stolen mail. Uh, one of the stolen mail was from Joanie Palmer. It was her credential bills from Sheila Alma's attic, called her right on the spot when I found this tent camp. Now, there is also a SNAP paperwork back there, and it's regarding a Cindy Elhay slip. Looked her up, and she looks like she's a frequent flyer with our, um, jail service, um, you know, they locked up. Um, you guys need to look into that. Those need to be cleaned up immediately before we get a child hurt, you know, whether it be a college student or a child playing in the playground. Second, I would like to address is Frontier Building. Uh, Dwayne Tackett and Paul Bailey are the two main guys there at Frontier. They would like to have the stairwell trash, um, which I hate to say this, but it does indicate, uh, food from Sugar Tree Ministry as far as, you know, the stuff that we see handed out. They, he wanted to know if they could send over a representative to clean up the stairwell of their food and trash. He said he's also had, still having sex in the stairwell, needles, canned goods. Uh, I have personally found heroin or crack. I'm not real familiar with the drugs, but that's what the police officer told me. Um, they're also standing, they're finding stolen UPS boxes in the dumpster, stolen bikes under the back porch, and people sleeping under the back porch. Number three, railroad at Lowe's. You guys have clothing on both sides of the track. We have tent camps. We have three on the right side when we were approaching, um, was it Prairie Avenue? Four is Maestri Gallery. I talked to, um, LT Land Development and Terry Roberts there, and she said that Larry was trying to get rid of that shed in there. He's going to have it removed. He would like to put up a really nice fence and make that a cute little area that map fight is resistant to, um, wanting that change. And if you can notice, the clientele that we have back there are in and out of jail. Sorry.
Where's your box, Jane?
Um, number five, gated community, Willard Drive. We have tent camps. Talk to them. They're finding needles. Uh, there was a tent camp removed there last year. Anna removed a lot of big items, but she left a lot of the small trash. The people from Willard Drive would like that back. There's a tent camp at Dove Church, um, between the post office and Dove Church, and is right near the Clinton County Early Learning Center. Um, number seven, great new clients are tossing trash along the side of the road.
Do I have to ask you to wrap it up?
I know, I, I am. I'm just trying to go through what you guys have really quick, so you know what I've pictured. Um, I'm always done. Um, and also I want to let you know there's airsoft CO2 pellets. You guys need to look up crossfire airsoft guns, so you can know how powerful these guns are. That is what, whether they're huffing those or they actually are in control of these airsoft guns, something to worry about. Number nine, underneath the bridge on the bike path heading, uh, from Mulberry to Nelson, there's graffiti and, uh, drug paraphernalia, and it's pretty, you guys need to just walk down underneath that first bridge behind, uh, the hospital. It's quite disturbing. Uh, ten, something that you really need to pay attention to. There's a hole underground between Main Street and Clark Street and part of the advanced auto parts. It is a big hole. We have vagrants living in this hole. It's out of the sinkhole, wash hole, whatever it is, but they're living in there, sleeping in there, shooting up in there. It is actually quite interesting. If I was a kid, I would, I'd want to go in that hole not to present a danger in case a kid gets out there.
Thanks.
That's it.
All right.
Sorry. If you have any questions.
Thank you.
Next is Tony. Thomas, so sorry.
Tony, why don't you let Dusty go before you and just tell him you want him to go before you?
Let's, let's let us run the, the.
It's okay. It doesn't matter. The.
Well, don't, like, follow the directions of your advocacy route, because that, that dig up a good way.
Do you sit down?
I'm signing out, sir. Can you keep that mouth shut as far as?
All right, we're done. That's it. You're going around here.
You're a big mouth. No, you, you guys are disrespecting. Whatever. He always comes up to your big mouth. You guys are going to go to prison. You watch and see.
Right.
You better go to prison.
People laughing.
You people laughing, TikTok. TikTok, it's coming, stand forth. You're going to go down for murder. Murder. They expect it with murder.
May I say something?
Sure.
Anybody that disrespects council members tonight, you're up here for three minutes. Let's be respectful. If you can't be respectful, I'm kicking you out regardless.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir.
What if council members disrespect us? Are you going to kick them out?
Nobody's disrespected you yet, sir. You haven't had the opportunity to talk.
You know, when I'm talking, he starts talking disrespecting me and using my time. So I expect, if he interrupts me again, you tell him he's got to go, right?
You will have your three minutes, sir.
Okay. Tell him that.
My house and people can't speak with that.
Right.
It's not passing when you call people names, okay? It's not.
Sometimes when someone raises their voice, they get upset.
Right. See, I mean, me and you have a conversation. We're not raising our voice. And that's how we want it, buddy.
Someone raises their voice, they get upset.
Right.
And they should be able to be taking it as professionals.
Right. But do you understand that council has an agenda to follow? They're asking you to please come up here and give your three minutes, okay? That's all we ask for, respect. And when we have somebody come up here, start calling council member names, that's disrupting a public meeting.
I understand.
Okay.
Anyway, any time someone raises their voice, they automatically butt in.
Sir. Sir.
I, I agree with you. I do agree with you, but there's a certain way to do it, right? Correct?
Tony, are you ready to start? Okay, we're going to start this part, all right? Thank you.
Good afternoon, and I would like to play a little excerpt from our state attorney Joe. This way we're going. Anyway, technical, it's not going to work out. What it states is that the records belong to the public, um, not to the government. What, what I witnessed, what, what, over the past year trying to gain records that should have been freely given, it's insanity. I mean, um, myself and Mr. Spencer, regardless, contrary to what you see at the angry end there sometimes, with Montgomery County, we were very cordial. Eleven police officers were called, um, over simple records. And here, and here's the problem, when it's in circles by, we say there's, whoever's feeding the chief here, the lies that there was a contract. We never started that. It, it doesn't exist, but we, we would come here from the records. Our county coroner would state, and I'll get on the corner in a minute, but, uh, stated, there's a contract, go to Montgomery County. You go to Montgomery County, eleven cops get caught on us. We come here, Sheriff's Department gets called on us. We're simply asking for records that belongs to the gentleman of his, of his deceased daughter. And, and, and according to Mr. Yost, those are hours to ask for, correct? I mean, I bet any one of you guys could go and get a record just like that. But it's only the suspicious ones that, that get, you know, put, hey, put up the wall, put up the wall, put up the wall. And, um, it just makes it look bad. Not to mention, now there's a, a pathologist who has viewed Casey's, the, the very minimal pictures that we've had. Says it's not pluck. I mean, her leg's office is broken, and I promised you guys an email, but I have to do that question. Do we have use of this during our time? Can we point out some, uh, whatever, whatever we want to bring, like, forward to you guys to view? If you, if you'd like to give you a week ahead of time, say, hey, view this, is it, can you, you know, I'm not going to show anything, you know, X-ray or anything like that, but obvious pictures of, it's a wound. If Mr. Spencer, okay, so.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to show pictures of dead bodies.
Well, you know, it'll just be a leg with, with blue jeans on it. You can, you're just no, there's, you're not going to see any open wounds, anything like that. It's going to be a leg with blue jeans on it. But there, there is an obvious, I mean, it's, there's no.
Could, could we, like, do we have a discussion among, to see, because I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think.
It might be upsetting for other members of the public. Not everyone is okay viewing those.
I, I understand. That's, that's, that's my personal first. If I present to you guys, if you think that, if, I, I'm, me personally, I don't, I don't think it's anything offensive, but it's, I mean, it's, it's something you see while eating dinner, BW3s, plus your football game, and somebody break into it. But it's an obvious, it's a very, very obvious break. I mean, there's nobody in the planet that's going to look at this and, and say, it's not broken. And there's, there's, in fact, ligature marks on her neck. Some people would like to claim it's a fold in her neck. No, it's not. Uh, she was maybe two percent body fat. I mean, a fat guy like me, yeah, there might be a fold, but, no, not her. Uh, but to this day, there's, there's, the man still doesn't have his, the pictures of his daughter. I mean, can anybody explain that to me? I mean, nobody can. But we get back and forth, back and forth. The problem is that the pictures that they did give him blocked the face out and covered up the, the wounds on the neck. However, they didn't block out the pictures of more than they appear. It, it was brain matter. I mean, everything, you know, cut, cut open, but nothing like that with, with Casey. Because I have a feel, I have a feeling, I know, when, when you see this, this lady. Because I have a feel, I don't have a feeling, I know, when, when you see this, this lady, this young lady with, with a bare leg, you're gonna see a bad break, and that's, but, I mean, if, if everyone here had daughters or something like this happened, and you, and you spent almost a year trying to get simple records, man. I mean, put the guy to ease. If you don't want us here talking about, put the guy, put him, put him to ease. I mean, it's, it's real simple.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, well, now, I just have something about the addresses on here. We can publicize that, because people are getting weird mail. I'll show you that to you. I'm getting analyzed, meanwhile. I think it's bright.
Greg Pittsler, would you like to come forward?
Well, Mo was up there just like he said the other day. They tell us to go up to Montgomery County Board. I go up there with everything we asked for. Everything was going good, and hell, this investigator comes out.
Speaking of the mind, then.
Investigator comes out and starts his crap. I mean, you ain't, you got the tape? I'd like to show you this tape that I had to go through. And then they, they trespasses from a public building, and they don't even have jurisdiction over it. The sheriff's department has jurisdiction. The police department trespasses from a building they don't have jurisdiction over. So, we go get the police, and it's the same runaround, same stuff. They don't want the, me to see them pictures. You know why? It's gonna take half this damn day. It's gonna run sheriff's department. It's where it took half the, the police department out. It's got a few more to get that were involved back. You know what I'm talking about? But should I have to go through this just to ask for pictures of my daughter? You know, you have your investigator up there. How many pictures did he take of my daughter? And I haven't received one from Wilmington. Not one picture from Wilmington. And nobody has answered for me. Nobody. You guys just. I mean, I don't have, the only thing I had to file this, I was to get them pictures. That's the only thing I filed for. I didn't file against you guys. I did them pictures. And if this is the only way I can get them, this is the only way I can get them. You know, I didn't say you guys can't talk, you know? You guys are elected. You don't work for him. You work under him, but he's not your boss. We are, okay? And you need to act like that. They still said, not do what they think you do. Do what you think's right. And you guys have to talk to him and tell him that it's not right what you're doing. He said the police department, he told me one day when I asked him, when I first come up here, if you were to head the police department, and you said no, and it's on tape. You said no. You're lying to the people. You are the police department. You gonna laugh when I turn around and leave again, like you did the last time? You thought it was so funny? Yeah. Something like that happened to your office. Might be funny, you know?
Hopefully, they have to wait you ten years.
Yeah, hopefully, you gonna have to wait ten years to get the pictures or anything about your daughter that was murdered. We're gonna get to the bottom. We're about there. We're about there. You'll see. It's gonna be ugly around here, I'm telling you.
Uh, next, we have Justin Pierce.
Okay, I've never thought of that. Um, so, my name is Dustin Pierce, and I just have a quick question. So, I noticed that there is a no-turn sign from South Street to Locust Street. And if you know what that is, it's from the city building there, so it's really hard to use a C left. It makes a lot of sense to be there. It's a stationary sign, so there's never any turning on right there. Um, the question that I have is that there is a, uh, electronic no-turn sign in front of Kroger in Lowe's, and it seems like it's electronic because, so when cars, cars have a light to turn left, there, so, uh, the left turn light. And so, the, the no-turn on right comes on, because you don't want to collide with cars that have the right of way turn in front of you. But it seems like that light always stays on, which if it will always stay on, it should probably be a stationary sign. So, I assume that it's supposed to turn off when the, the cars that have the no, or the turn on red, when that goes off, the no-turn on right should go off too. But it's always on. So, I was just curious if it's like, gonna get like, forgotten at some point?
We, I can, we actually discussed this a few meetings ago. Um, and my understanding is that, are we waiting until the Elizabeth?
No, they're.
Section, because my understanding is that they're not done, and though eventually I'll be programmed to work together, but that if the project hasn't, I'll let Andrew speak. I think the project hasn't been turned over yet, or.
The project is, the project is not complete. They are still have to work on the timing and setting up, uh, the way the, the lights talk to each other and everything. So, they are currently working on, um, the controller systems that, that do all of those things. So, we are talking to them actually nearly every day about where they are with getting that set and, um, the little engineering there that we're working through. So, when it's all complete, that light just function as you were describing, like you would expect it to. Because you're right, if it's gonna be on all the time, have a police set that break. If it's gonna be on all the time, they might as well just put a regular sign there. If that's how open minded.
Yes, I had that same question.
I'll be a little more blunt. State put law equipment.
I just wanted to know if that was, that's what that happens, since they made them a state.
So, so the answer is it is gonna get better?
It is wanting to eventually.
Thank you.
That was the last thing. Is there anyone else before we? No one else? Okay.
All right. Anybody else have anything that they wish to speak on?